Good evening. This is the Rutland Town Planning Commission. And this is Thursday, August fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. Let's start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance, please. Okay, so we've got. We've got Dana Howard Sherman, Mary Beth. And myself as regular members and Norman Jim as the alternates. Make seven, so everybody can vote this evening that's here. And I think everyone is here. Or virtual. So let's start tonight with the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Anyone want to offer any changes or additions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, no public tonight for public comment. So we move down to new business. And we've got a couple of things that were sent out. Maybe twice now. But we didn't take them up, pick them up last time, Bill, because we weren't really familiar with what. Or where they came from.
Yeah.
So we've got. We don't really need to discuss the existing flood hazard regulations, although I can bring that up later. These will be the select board.
Yep.
But you have tweaked the informational building permit. And you've added a new flood hazard area development permit.
Yes, so the. They're they're both kind of related, so. I I was going through ordinances and just. Looking through different stuff and. Looked looked at the flood hazard one and. Where it said permit required, and I'm like. I don't remember that, so I looked at it and sure enough, we are, we have a permit required for. Properties in in flood zones. Uh, so it goes by the FEMA flood map designation. Uh, so I basically just. Went to the went to the our regulations and created the permit out of what it's asking for. Um, since posting it online, we've had two brought in already. Um, that didn't take long, so.
Ah.
Um.
Hmm.
And so because of that, because it deals with. Basically, construction. I added. Uh, some sections to our informational building permit. About require about checking this, so. When someone fills out the informational permit, I have on there is your address within the FEMA zone. Give the give the link if yes, you have to fill out the permit if no, then you're all set. Uh, and I asked for a copy of the map to to prove that. Uh, of the two, uh, one both, one said yes, and they were, one said no, and they were. So I had to call them back and say, yeah, you really actually have to do this, so this is my project isn't in the area. Doesn't 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 specify the project specifies your property, so. They did that. It's not. It's not a huge thing, but. There is some work behind it to to do this, so these also get are are going to be recorded, so that way there's a record of us. Acknowledging construction in a flood zone or a potential flood zone. So like our driveway permits have a permit book in in the vault. These will go in there too, so they'll be part of part of the record, so. Part of the permit fee is the cost of the recording in the vault.
With that second individual, what was the difference between where the project was and where?
It was.
He resided?
He he was putting in a pool. And he was putting it behind his house, which. When you look at the parcel, the house and the pool are not in the FEMA. Flood designation on the map. But it's on his parcel. His parcel is affected by the flood zone. So. Erring on the side of cautions, because otherwise I don't want to. Have to get into the level of detail that we're measuring to see where the project is versus that like that's just that's. Too much extra work, so. It's just if your parcel is affected, you file the permit, and it's not a big deal. I mean, it's we're not looking for a lot of money. Um, but yeah, so that's that's part of it, so um, and. We have hard copies of all the FEMA maps here. But it's far easier to use their their web tool. It brings you right to the address and it's all set. Gives you all the information you need.
Okay. So. The the reason behind this is to make sure that, you know. We're covered by additional sewer lines or water lines or.
Um. It lists a statement of purpose. And that's what I'm going by, so page one. List its statement of purpose is to minimize damage and and things like that in flood zone, so. That's why it exists, and I believe it goes back to, I'm assuming it goes back to reimbursement rates. If we have these, we get a certain level, and we were talking about the other night about the river corridor, you know, that's a different level. But um, this was. It's there. I mean, it's it's there, so we we do need it, and we. Kind of go back to the informational building permits. We've always had that requirement. We've never asked for it. We started asking for the last couple of years, and now. This is just bringing us farther in line, so.
Dana.
Um, just a couple of call them technical questions. Um. I went looking for the flood hazard area regulations, but couldn't find them on the website. Are they on the website?
In our ordinance tab, yeah.
Yeah, in the ordinance tab, okay. Um, I I looked, I couldn't. I couldn't find them. Um, anyway, and what is form number two?
Uh, where is it?
Uh, down below permit fee, number of gallons requested form number two.
From number two?
Oh, excuse me, from number two. All right, I just misread that. Uh, where is number two?
Where?
On your flood hazard development permit, it's the last. Area says permit fee before the white space about three quarters of the way down. Number of gallons requested from number two.
Right after the description.
Description of the building to be connected to the town sewer line?
That's not our flood hazard. That's our that's our sewer connection ordinance. That's our sewer allocation ordinance, our sewer allocation request.
Oh, this is what you sent out?
That I sent out?
Yeah.
Well, it's not right there.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why, okay.
What does it say at the top?
Flood hazard area development.
Well, it does say water and sewer under the seal.
Yeah. Well, that's very strange, so. That's what you got?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's bizarre. That's what it is.
Oh, no.
Well, that's very.
This is the other one we got. We got that.
That's correct.
Yeah.
But this is the this is the permit.
Okay.
It's a lot more extensive. You want to put? You want to just quickly put that up? Yeah. Quick look at it.
That's very strange. I don't know why that came out like that.
Everybody else got the same thing, right? Yeah.
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 Very strange.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna look a lot different. Hang on one second.
I I think on um. These applications here. That uh. It should note right up in the top that it is an application. It just says permit. And I. I don't know whether that might confuse some people or not, but that's certainly an application.
So should it say permit application? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Jim, yeah, I can tell you about that.
Okay, so yeah, much different.
Yeah, I don't. I have no idea. I look that's I never saw that on my end. I don't know why that showed up when you're in like that. That's very strange. No wonder you're confused.
Thanks, Bill. I just thought it was because I missed the meeting.
Yeah, permit application. That's that's a good point. Um, this application underneath the address and phone number is for permitted development. Conditional use approval. We don't have that.
So the uh, in the regulations, it defines those two things. Uh, permitted development I have to approve, conditional use the select board has to approve.
Okay, we've got a system set up, so the select board can do that.
It's in the regulations. It's already. Everything is in there.
Okay.
Do you think that, excuse me, um, do you think that it? That after conditional use approval. Uh. Some indication it's the select board for a select more approval or something?
No, because when they drop it off, if it goes to me, I'll take care of it. It goes to select board, I'll put it on their agenda. I I don't want to make it more complicated than it needs to be.
I always think.
All I need to do is fill it fill it out, right, Bill?
Yes, but also, Norm, if 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 you, when you read the regulations, it does state that. It does state the approval, so. I don't think putting out the permit is necessary, because if you. It says at the top, I have read read and comply with the regulations. If you read them, it does state the select board has to approve it, so.
Okay.
Okay, and that bottom part is probably the same as what we got, right? Application received. And that's a little bit different. Approval type needed. What else is below there?
Um. Where are you looking?
Very bottom, the box, bottom. Yeah.
Normal, like.
Right.
Tracking stuff.
Just sign off.
Yeah.
Okay, so do. Do we need to prove this, or does this just go to the select?
We already have this. This is this is something that should have should have been in place. Essentially, when 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 this, when these regulations went into place, and I forget what year it was, I think I can look.
Two thousand eight.
Yeah, that's when it should have appeared. So we're only.
Watching yourself.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay. And so and back to the informational building permit, the only thing different there is checking to see if you're in the flood.
Yeah, so I I added um, a little section in the middle there, you know, if it's is it within that area? Um, and then just a couple of things in my approval thing at the bottom. Just signing off that's verified and. Yeah.
Norm.
Yes, well, Bill, I didn't hear clearly one thing, so I don't know whether this, you know, what the situation is. It says estimated project dates, and I thought you said something about estimated building date. Um. So I'm a little com- did I hear that correctly?
The project dates that that line has not changed. That's just that's for the building side of it, so there's building of, you know, whatever they're doing. Just letting us know approximately when they expect to begin and end.
No, I understand that. But and maybe I heard wrong, that's why.
Uh, I'm asking. That's that's that that line has not changed. That's the same as it was before.
Okay, did you say something about estimated building date in in your description in the beginning, or did I hear it incorrectly?
I I don't. I don't remember.
Okay, all right. Nobody else is confused. If nobody else is confused, it's fine. I don't have. That's a question. Thank you.
Yep.
So this is.
Okay, so no, no one hasn't approved the informational building permit. And there is one there, and we we you've just made some changes.
Yeah, I just. Made it so that way someone doesn't bring it in and have to go back and and do something else, so now it's just part of the process, so if they're doing. One or the other, then they're going to get to it, so.
Okay. I guess we should. Uh, probably. Move to approve this as change the informational building permit.
So um, just a clarifying question. Um, since Jim raised the question about whether it should say it's an application, should that be also say application at the top? I mean. If just for consistency purposes, if it if this is the application for the permit, it's not the permit itself. Then what Jim observed about the flood hazard area development permit. I would think it would apply to that.
Yeah.
It. Yes, no? Anybody?
Seems that we make it consistent to do that, yeah. Yeah.
Both applications.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry, Bill.
Want to work to add that word.
Is it really? Uh.
It's okay, and it's it's fine with the way I make the forms very easy to to use online. But there's a lot of editing in the background to do that, and to add the word, I have to undo all the editing to add the word.
Sorry about that. Um.
It's that important, I can do it.
I just say this should be consistent, so if you're going to do it for one, you should do it for both. You're not going to do it for either, then.
I think we use that that language for subdivision and the other. Permits to write. It's an application.
Both of them say like one of the one of the flood one tops says applicant name. And the building permit wants a signature applicant at the bottom, so that's done on there.
Would someone like to make a motion?
To approve the the building permit?
With the change or without the change?
Uh, I'll I'll make a motion to accept the uh, the two documents as presented by Bill.
The other one already exists.
Which one?
The flood hazard one.
Well, we were making a a change to the top or no? I'm just. I I I don't necessarily think that we have to, because he has an applicant name on there. It should be clear. And uh, so I don't have any overarching need to put the word application on either of those, so I was just making a motion to accept. And if we don't have to make a motion, we don't have to do anything to the flood hazard area development permit. Then I will just make a motion to accept the um, informational building permit. Uh, form as presented.
I second that.
I'll second that. Okay.
Without the word application.
Without the word application.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? Okay. So on a related topic. Um, I was at the select board meeting the other night. And I just mentioned since we were. We have been updating the flood hazard permit. That perhaps we could look at. Adopting river corridors in town, and what that would do is. River corridors take into consideration how rivers and and large streams meander. You know, naturally. Um. So there's a wide, in many cases. The river corridor is wider than the special flood hazard area. And there's a river corridor all along the river. You know, even beyond special flood hazard area. So one of the incentives to adopt these river corridors. Is that uh, in a federally declared disaster. Uh, for a municipal assistance, there's more money that can come to the town.
If 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 there's damage in a river corridor.
If there's, yeah, damage, you know, if there's debris that has. Um. No, it doesn't have to be in the river corridor. What you do in the river corridor is put some restrictions on development and things like that. No new structures and things like that. But it would apply townwide if there was a federally declared disaster to help with cleanup. Uh, fixing roads, you know, et cetera. So I asked them if if they would just want if they wanted to start by looking at a map that would show where all the river corridors are, can, you know. Vis a vis the special flood hazard areas, and they said yes, so we'll do that in a couple of weeks and. And.
So are river corridors defined uh? By? Who? Let me ask the other. Who defines the river borders?
Um, well, I, you know, I think, you know. The state does, and the state maps them, um, and then consults with FEMA.
Okay.
Um, about that.
So we in order to for us to get something together, we have to go to the state and see. And just get a copy of what they have.
Yeah, they they've got, you know, if it gets that far, they've got some model regulations.
Okay.
And some standalone ones for towns without zoning. That, you know, they prefer you use, you know, everything in there, but but the towns don't have to, as long as they get. The most important things, and that would just be a check off with the state on whether enough of those important things are in there.
I I was just trying to to understand whether we would. Have to do that or whether there's something to start with, and you answered it.
Yeah.
But we would be adopting language that already exists and just applying it to our town plan?
Yeah, yeah, um, and you know, we can change it if we want. Um, there is a very um. There's a very active flood plane manager uh, for our area right now, a new a new guy and uh. Active in the sense that, you know, he he loves doing this stuff with towns, working with them.
Okay. So it'll be on a future agenda.
Yeah.
Right.
Would would he come down and talk to us about it, or is this something that doesn't really need that?
Uh, he he could. He could. Um, I I think I'd like Norm to get a little more direction from the select board. Before we use his time.
Sure. Makes sense.
He's his his area is Addison, Rutland, and Bennington Counties. So I think he probably has a lot of evening meetings. Okay.
I would I would suspect so.
Yeah.
Just when we.
Okay. Yeah.
Well, just when we've done some of these things in the past, it's been helpful to have somebody from the state. We've we've had that.
I'll I'll look into that. Yep, definitely.
But maybe we want to read the model ordinances first, you know. And have informed questions.
I'll send that out. I'll send it to Bill, or well, maybe I'll send it out since he's going on vacations. So I think that covers a new business. Um. Old business. The informational building permit update that um, also should include the questionnaire. I did have a conversation with the town attorney, Kevin Brown. And um. You know, he's he's fine with a permit, permit application, whatever is is what it is. Um. I shared with him the questionnaire that we'd come up with. For new construction. And he. He said it was fine. Uh, we've probably pushed the ordinance as far as we can go without being a zoning town. But he did suggest that that perhaps the planning commission take one last look at that to see if there are any changes. We want to make with that. Uh, but the questionnaire is okay. Uh, he suggests we run it by the select board. Make sure they know what we're doing. And then we talked a little bit about. You know, the the purpose behind all of this is. For the planning commission to know what's going on, but also for the town to know that we want to know. And, you know, there's some things that we're we're looking for, and we need to know, listeners need to know. So we talked about doing more education. Um. He mentioned, Bill, that you wanted to make sure the town clerk, both the both the people in the town clerk's office know to to, you know, send those types of requests to you. And. We can up the civil penalty maximum. It can go up to eight hundred now. It's. Much less than that. It's. Yeah. We can do that, and we can do the. The per day. Um, penalty up to eight hundred dollars a day. But he thought that most people. His suggestion was that since most people go to a website now to find out information. Some will call Bill, but most will probably go online. That we that it would probably help us get the message out. If this was a little more prominent on the town website. That we have. We have this ordinance. And that we have a a permit application. So. Bill, I know you've got a lot of competing interests. For that. Right now, it's it's kind of buried. It's what? Under government, and then you look at you look for ordinances and.
No, it's government permits and forms. Yeah, and.
Then you go down a long list.
Well, yeah, we we have a list of all of them. Yes, yeah.
So do you have? Do you have any solutions, Bill, for people who are, you know, thinking about construction, but?
So. We have, we Carrie and I have been working on a list of. Frequently asked questions, and we have a page that is. Uh. She's got a couple that she's got to fill in the answers for, and then we've got a page that's going to be up there, and that is going to have a link. On the homepage. Uh. To the frequently asked questions, and it'll be that is that is it's covered in a couple of different topics in there, so and on that page. There'll be links right to the permits and forms individually, so.
Okay.
I think, you know, it's it's difficult because. You know, there's only so much real estate on the homepage, and, you know, if I start adding to the banner, it's just going to make the banner overwhelming to look at, so. And it's not really going to give us, I think, the effect that we're looking for. I'm all for calling it out. I'm all for making it, you know, making it making it seen, but I think I I, you know, if we if we overwhelm the the top of the page, it's just going to make things cluttered.
Could there be a link to. Um, frequent areas and permits and forms would have its own link on the homepage on in the body, or is that not feasible?
You do already.
Oh, you do, okay. So I missed it.
Yeah, right at the bottom of the page, we have a a whole section of quick links, and one of them is permits and forms. It's it's already there.
Okay.
But that is a long list of permits and forms. Well, the ordinance list is really long.
It's, you know, so so then we look at like, okay, so do we break it down? How do we break it down, or, you know, how do then then if we break it down, we're creating more pages after that point, so they're broken up by category. When we we talked about um. Like Carrie and I were talking about how to advertise for like due dates for taxes and whatnot, and. Well, and then topics of like, well, probably put bill stuffers and 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 tax bills, stuff like that, and there comes a point where we we said. There's only so much that we should have to do to try and. Get that message out. You know, we I I do put I put it on social media. I do posts on there. You know, we 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 talk about it at meetings, stuff like that, and and. This was the argument of. The person that we ended up sending giving the violation to. He says, well, I didn't know. And we talked about this way to organize it, and we said, how much more responsibility do you want to put on the town to notify you when you could just go there, search for a building permit, and it comes up? Like.
Or call the office and say one of the one of the taxes.
Comes a point when we can only do so much, because there's so many different things out there. That it it becomes, Carrie, did you all get the postcard for for your voting district?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we've had people coming in voting early, and Carrie said she's been asking everybody about that. And she's like, what number was on your postcard? Like, I don't know. She's like, did you read it? I said, yeah, we looked at it. It said, we said, it's our our polling place didn't change, so we threw it away. No, no one. Everybody coming in, she says it's extremely low numbers of people. That actually read the information in it versus just seeing the thing that says your polling place didn't change. Okay, good. So. We are, we literally. Did. Uh, uh, spent time and money to to educate people about voting, and it's it's just not not being effective, so.
Well, they saw what they wanted to see.
And that's the thing, so, you know. I get calls. And that's the thing, so, you know, I get calls all the time from developers asking about our zoning regulations all the time.
Yeah.
Because there is, and I can't, it's not on our website. But there's an archived something out there that has the draft zoning documents that were created and posted at one point. And they come up. If you search Rutland Town Zoning, they come up. And so if, if I'm going to call from out of state developers all the time. I, I think our town residents can, you know, we have. Like, you know, government and the permits and forms and they're all there. Or we have right at the bottom of page permits and forms. Like, I, you know, I don't. You know, if we, I try to save the, I try to save the banner for like, right now, it's town line road is closed on Monday. That's important. You know, you need a building permit? That's a regular everyday thing. It's not something to call out, like, you know, and I, I can, I can. I, I will guarantee you, I get more traction out of a social media post when we get two or three or four thousand views. Than we do by putting anything on the banner of the website.
Is there room on the frequently asked questions? Part that you're working up with Carrie to add this and, and do a direct link?
Oh, I, there, there's two sections on it directly and they are directly linked to, to them, yes.
Okay, you're already, you already included.
Already there, yes.
Okay. I mean, I, I, I guess we could see if, I mean, we could do some other, we could do Facebook.
Yeah, I, I've also looked at other towns, like I, I, I. I look at other towns' websites and I steal ideas from them all the time. I have yet to see one that says on the homepage, a building permit required. There's links to, here's our, here's our zoning regulations and here's our, here's our, here's our town clerk or town manager. You know, here's, here's a link to the permits, everything there. I have yet to see one that calls out on the homepage that, hey, you, you have to have a building permit in our town. It, it's just, I think.
That's true, but.
Would be unusual. I think it's more unusual now for someone to expect there to not be one in any town. Than it be, than it's expected to, to, to not have to do it.
Well, I mean, I, I think in a town like ours, people are increasingly thinking there's, there's less regulation than there is.
Not sure where, I agree. I'm not sure why they're getting that impression because just because we don't have zoning doesn't mean we don't have. You know, and that's, then that's some of the things I talk about on the frequently asked questions. I talk about like. You know, uh, buildings adjacent to property lines and things like that because those questions come up a lot and. You know, where, where are my property lines and, you know, things that, that, you know. Are, are, would be covered, but I, I have a specific question. What are the zoning regulations around the town? Not like just good debt. It's a little more drawn up than that, but you know, we don't, we don't have any. But we do require building permits, you know, so, and, you know, none of these permits are. Expensive or difficult to complete. Some people do a better job than others, but.
Right, right. But you know, we started this months ago.
Yeah.
Because we weren't being informed.
Yeah.
And you weren't being informed either.
It's gotten better. We're getting them on a, we, you know, the problem is we don't know the gap, right? We know what we're getting. Which is more than we used to get, which was none. But it's like. What are we, what are we missing? There's no way to know. And if we do all this work, which. I, I'm all, I'm all for getting the information out there. That, that's, it's absolutely worthwhile. But if we put fifty hours of work, a hundred hours of work into this. We're never, we're, first of all, we're never going to know how many more applications we got because of that work.
Right.
But if somebody wasn't going to do it before, is that going to make them do it now? I don't know.
Maybe we need a case study done of the most recent experience.
I, I think, I think the real question is a problem we're trying to solve.
Yeah.
And if we don't have a problem, there's not, I mean. Relatively speaking. If, if we don't have a major problem, then we shouldn't be investing a major amount of time trying to solve something that isn't. And I don't know if that's the situation, but in terms of investment of time, we want to invest your time, we're going to get the biggest bang for your buck. And if we have a, a clearly delineated problem as a result of even anecdotal information that says that. People don't understand something, then we should address it. If we take the, um. Uh, the change in voting districts as an example. People for the longest time have had a stereotypical image in their head about where they go to vote and what that means. And even a well-informed person cannot have the full scope of the change. I'll consider myself one of them. Until I came to the town clerk's office and asked for a copy of the, a sample ballot.
Yep.
I didn't realize that voting district two now wraps around three quarters of the Donut Hole. As opposed to being combined with.
Includes a whole chunk of Rutland City.
Is it two or four? No, no, four, uh, four includes the chunk of Rutland City.
Yes.
But two wraps from, uh, north seven.
Clarendon.
All the way down to Clarendon and practically to Mendon.
Yeah.
And now voting district four is the northeast quadrant of, um, Rutland Town. And the northeast section of the city. Now, I knew that there was a, a change in redistricting. I had no idea what the scope of that was. And what the impact was going to be in terms of those presenting themselves as representatives, not state senators, because that's countywide. But for, uh, representatives. And so the implication for that, for the average citizen is huge.
It's huge.
If you get a, if you get a card and you explain that and they say, whoa, this is complicated. At least I know where I'm going and where I have to go to vote. And that's, that, that's what they want to keep. They want to keep it as simple as that, that my bowling place hasn't changed. And Carrie explained that to me.
Yeah.
Not that I was concerned, but you know.
Concerned that we're running, that, that she said she's heard is that somebody says, well, I want to vote for this person. They're not.
In your district.
More. You can't vote for them.
Yeah.
But I want to. You can't.
And see, that's, that's the big thing.
Right.
That's the big shift.
Yes.
So, uh, now when you're talking about, uh, the House, uh, of Representatives, you know, the State House. You are, those who are running in your district are now eligible, eligible to receive your vote. But for District Two, Tom Taranzenian, who's the other one? Paul?
Tom Taranzenian's not running.
Oh, he's not running.
He's not on the ballot. It's just Paul Clifford. Um, so, so how are you bringing this back around to?
So I'm bringing this back around because when we make changes. And things have not been, uh, the, the regular practice. That if there's a, if there's a complication to it, there is going to be some confusion. Now, confusion. Now, a form that should have been filled out and the people haven't been, that's just a question of letting them know each time that they come in. And that will pass word of mouth and that's pretty simple. But a change such as the voting change is much more complicated, more complicated. Our changes are, and the more novel those changes are, the more we need to invest time and energy into getting the word out. So I, I'm just saying, I'm not, uh, I'm not able to evaluate. The, uh, the level of complexity that this represents compared to the voting, but I was using voting as one extreme.
Sure.
And this perhaps as another, so.
So what if, what, maybe. We, we're going to have an opportunity in a couple of weeks, maybe at your booth. Because you all are going to be there to help volunteer, because I'm going to be there all day. Um, so maybe we ask people to come by, like, first of all, do you know building permits are required in Rutland Town?
That's great.
Just ask them.
Yeah.
Are, are you resident of Rutland Town? Do you know, have you ever had to put one in before and what was your experience? And they're all going to say, they're, they're going to say, yes or no, they didn't know. Most of them are going to say, no, I didn't do it. Or if anybody does, they're going to say it was really easy. Because it is really easy. And, you know, the other thing we could do is we could have Larry Delvinieri. Do a little public information sign at the transfer station because he sees more town residents on a given week than anybody does.
Yeah, yeah, he's got that bulletin board there too.
And he's not afraid to use it.
No.
That would be great.
But I think if, as, as part of your energy survey, you know, efforts at the townwide celebration. Just ask people about this and. You know, it's like, it's, just ask people, you know, we don't need to take anything official, but just ask them if they've heard of it. You know, we had, do, do you know we have one? Have you ever done one and what was your experience? And just, I bet you it's going to be largely, and if somebody has a complaint, I'll be right there.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea.
Yep.
So.
I'm not opposed to putting on the home, I know this all started with putting on the homepage. It's Kevin's idea. It's a good idea. It just become, you know. I, I, I almost worry like even the banner. At, at the top of the page.
What I was going to suggest, Bill, is that. With the frequently, the FAQ, the FAQ, uh, we do some, some additional outreach and, and s- see where that gets us.
So here, here's the, here's what it looks like. Here's the homepage and this is the banner we have right now. And I, I have, besides, like. Road closures, office closures, last minute things, I've really left it alone. For those things, like. You know, just see, seeing our calendar and the calendar gets a lot of attention. But over here on the right, where's the Rutland Town notices?
Mm-hmm.
Right here is going to be the frequent ask questions. And it's almost, you know, either the top or the bottom of that list is the best place to be and I'm putting it bottom of the list, so. I think that will. I think that'll do some good. I mean, we can look at some redesign. We can look at some layout changes with our, with our vendor too, but. When it comes to like layout and like permanent changes like that, there's a lot that goes into this page and. And we're redoing some of the stuff at the top, so I may be able to add. The frequent ask questions like FAQ at the top of the menu, like at the top of the picture, so there's something we can do for that too, but. Um, we're. Our website's come a long way from what, from what it was.
Yes, yeah.
So I think that, um. You know, there, there's, there's things we can do, but uh, my, my concern about putting the thing like the building permit on their homepage is it's, it's. There's things we get asked more often than that that are, will be more worthy of the spot.
Okay.
Bill, does, uh, our website have the, uh, capacity like some websites do that has an informational box that will pop up? Uh, uh, not as something you put on the homepage, but it just flashes, uh, before you access the page, you have to click out of it. That's a great way to, uh, provide information. And then you could have a link in there and you put it on for a, a, a short period of time. It could be a week, a month, whatever it happens to be. And then you take it down after you, as you're introducing something new. That's a great way for something new to, to be there for people to know the look or to ask. And I don't know if we have the capacity to do that.
I don't know what the, if. Our platform has the functionality, but I can, I can find out.
It's just, it's, it's just a, it's a useful way to put something on for a short period of time.
Yeah.
Uh, or if there's a special event coming up.
And that's for that banner, you know, the yellow banner, that's.
I saw it, yeah.
We use that, that is there. That's definitely a, a color that is adverse to everything else there on purpose to make you see.
And it's red and all the lettering is red, so it sticks out.
When I, when I could change the color, that's not, that's not a big deal, but, but yeah, so we, we, we can look at that and, you know, I'm hoping that the frequently asked questions. You know, people tend to gravitate to that. I think that kind of function. More when they go someplace they haven't seen before, a website they haven't seen before. And they don't want to look for something, great, what's my frequent ask question? Because if I have a question twice, someone else has too, so it'll be right there and it's. It's probably, boy, we've probably got twelve to almost maybe tw- almost fifteen or twenty topics right now in there and we haven't even started it. We, we haven't even made it live yet. We've already got that many, so. You know, there's a lot of stuff that we get regular phone calls about, so.
Could I ask that be somewhere in, close to the beginning of that particular question that it referred to development in the town?
So my first, the first one is, do I, do I need a building permit? The first question is that. Uh, I don't have categories. That gets more complicated. So what it's going to be is there's going to be like a list of questions. And then you, like, say the first question is, do I need a building permit? You, you can click on that and it'll just bring you down the page to, to that topic. So we're trying to do categories that makes it more complicated. The layout gets more complicated and.
You can put a bookmark in to take you to the section that's relevant to your question. Yeah, that's great.
Right to the permit.
Yeah, right, right to the, right to the answer to the question and then in that answer is a link to the page, so.
Okay, um, is this satisfactory with everyone? That we go this route with the frequently asked questions and, and try to get more outreach out there?
Yeah.
There we go. Okay. Next item is, speaking of the townwide celebration, August twenty seventh, we're, we're pretty well set there. Uh, Mary Beth, can you still squeeze in a couple hours?
Yeah, I'm thinking the afternoon, so like noon to two.
Okay, um, and Andy, I think can do the morning. He can, he can do a couple of hours. And myself, so I think we're all set there. And we'll have a table, tent, uh, we'll have the new energy survey. We'll have. That pocket park. Uh, map with suggestions and we'll do something with the building permit. I'm quite sure what, but.
They've ordered a lot of food, so come hungry.
Okay. Down to announcements and other news. Anybody have any updates or anything like the? Usually look to you, Mary Beth, so not, not this time.
Nope, not this time.
Okay. Let's go down to the approval of the July fourteenth minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of July fourteenth.
Is there a second?
Second up.
Thanks, Howard. And any discussion or suggestions?
Oh, Norm has. Something?
Oh, sorry, Norm.
No problem. I just had a couple little questions. I'm not sure that they need corrections, but. Uh, and under new business number one. Uh, there is interest in opening a retail storefront or just retail store?
I think it go, could go either way. Um. And you know, I, I think the options are still open for them, whether it's going to be a storefront. Or a store.
What's the difference?
Um. Storefront's usually connected with other stores, I guess. I don't know.
I, I.
It's not.
Think that it was worth. Um, I. Go ahead.
I, I was going to say, I, I wasn't here and I read it and I didn't find it misleading at all.
No, I didn't.
Okay, same. Okay, that's fine. Um. I really didn't have anything else.
Okay, yeah, they were great. So I'll call the questions. All those in favor of the minutes. As Bill so expertly pre- prepared for us. Say aye, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining. I wasn't here. I was also, I, I was also not here, so I'll abstain as well.
Okay. Okay.
So a motion passed with two abstentions, right?
Okay. Now entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
A second?
Okay.